You'd like us to wave, is that the word? You just want us to wave like that? So we're looking, okay, we got a motion by councillor Einoni and seconded by councillor Thompson to waive the raffle permit fee for the fundraiser. Any discussions to the motion? All those in favor? Excellent. And are you looking for some council participation?
Absolutely. I think everyone has an application form on their desk. If you could join us, I think it would be wonderful. It will be twosomes. And it could be husband-wife, it could be father-child, it could be some a-sculpts, whatever you want to do, it's $100 a card.
A team. No, councillor Peter Angelo wanted to comment as well.
May your worship always just wondering if you're looking for some city teams, obviously. It'd be nice to have some city representatives.
Well, that's why we initially, we were going to have it earlier, but we felt that 5:00 PM would allow people to get off the way from working down to the park.
Sure. Okay. I mean, I'll make the motion to worship. I don't know how many teams we're going to end up having, but perhaps we can send out an email and see if he was interested.
How many, just to show hands, how many look like they might be able to swing Tuesday, October 16th of the council. So we got councillor Einoni, Thompson, Morocco, Maves, Kari.
I golf as well as I bowl.
Well, it's mini putts, so we got a chance. There's wall bear. So it looks like we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, looks like we got about eight, yeah. And councillor Gates. So we've got, looks like potentially a commitment for eight. Plus, I'm sure there'll be a lot of interest around senior staff. I know they're just dying to come out there and bang around their golf balls. So we've got a motion from councillor Peter Angelo. What is your motion for councillor?
Thank you, worship. It'd be easier, instead of putting a number on it, just to send out an email and see who was interested and then book them there.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. Well, it looks like we've got preliminary commitment of eight.
We'll start.
Yeah, from the city councillors. We're going to get word out throughout the city and everybody at home. All they have to, there's only 72 teams, and then it's done, it's sold out. And all they have to do is call City Hall.
Or City Hall.
Yes. Project Chair or City Hall will be happy to process your spots. And I'm sure we're going to get a lot of community support for this great fundraiser. And I want to say to you, Wayne, thank you very much. Wayne came into my office in the spring with the idea of a fundraiser. He's offered to chair this fundraising event. And we thought it was brilliant. It was fun, it was unique, and I think it's going to be a good time. So thank you very much, Wayne, for doing that. Appreciate that. Okay, next, we've got Steve Ludzik up. Steve Ludzik, we're still at Steve. Geez, old dapper Dan there. Steve Ludzik's going to talk to us regarding a celebrity fundraiser that he's doing in regard to Parkinson's disease. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks very much. Thank you, council members. This is my Wayne Thompson club. Right from his father. I've been in council twice in my life. Once in '84, and tried it more, I didn't have it in me once. In 2003, which didn't end up all right, very hard, obviously, right? As your mayor may not know, I came out with the black eye Parkinson disease three months ago. It actually had twelve of them, and it's got five of them. And finally, I woke up one morning and said, what am I doing? Running from a bowling ball. And I thought I would try to maximize my money and make some money for Parkinson's disease. And I'm going to do it. I'm going to start with October 5th, the public area, because of the roast of Iron 19. That guy's hot enough to get a bowling ball. Bad boy, Austin. I will be the MC, and we will have guys like Michael Lancer, Dave Van Hammerschulz, Dennis Hall, Walt Agreski, Hal Cotton, Bandy here, and so forth. And they will be hosting Iron and Mike King. I'll be the MC. Kind of like that old Dean Martin show. It'll be a lot of fun. And to win purchase tickets, it is through Danamuck Enterprises, and the number is (905) 357-4977. Or you can order them online at lightofdaignaigar.com. I love the city full house. It's a club that I fit 600 people in, and I love to get that. And I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that I want to keep that money in the Niagara region. I have to go treat the Martin, Ontario. I just thought it was crazy. And I'm going to keep the money here in the Niagara region. I'm a guy that was born in Toronto, and I know that Niagara falls down now. I have to want that. And thanks to the councils that helped me fund the meeting with Peter Angelo. We've got a great committee. And I just want to let people know that we're still capable of available.
Thank you very much, Steve. Are there any questions or comments from council of Steve? What I can tell you is I was at his roast last year, but the roast somehow, it was supposed to be a roast of someone else. Marcel D'Ar?
Yeah, but you knew you had to make sense of your.
Yeah. He said, he said to me, well, you know, you could sit up at the head table. And I said, well, Steve, I'm just bringing greetings. I don't need to sit at the front table. No, no, just come sit at the front table. Well, I soon learned why I was sent at the front table. Before long, he teed off on me, and I became part of the roast. And if you haven't been to one of these, Steve puts on a show that I think would make Don Cherry blush. It was very entertaining, very funny. You hear the inside talk of what went on in the NHL. He brings referees, coaches, players, and the discussions and the jokes. My side was hurting me for a couple of days. And it's very entertaining. It's not something you'll see on television, I will say that.
Yeah, for 18 and over.
Yeah, it's for 18 and over. And you definitely want to cover your ears, but it is well worth it. It's very entertaining, very interesting. And it's like locker room discussion with the best of the best. And Steve, you do an outstanding job. Your one-liners are the best. I mean, I'd love to use some of them here, but they're X-rated.
You have a pretty good move yourself.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Councillor Maves, you wanted to comment?
No, I just wanted to congratulate my friend and neighbor, former neighbor, Steve. I've been up to a few of the meetings, and sorry, I can't do pitches as some of the people on your committee, but anyway, they've got a very hard-working committee, and they're really committed to this night. And for anybody who wants to go and have loads of fun and meet some great hockey players, it's going to be a super evening for them. So Steve, my hat's off to you for going for this. All the best.
And thank you also to councillor Maves and Peter Angelo for helping out with the event. I know you've got a big committee of a lot of dedicated people to kick this off.
It's unbelievable, and I want to do this in annual thing again. I want to keep the money to pay for it. And that's my goal, to build a neurological disorder in Niagara region. It's a big goal, but hopefully.
Well, that's great. Well, on behalf of council and all the residents, I'm sorry, councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, it would be nice to have some representation at the table. It'd be nice if we could send out an email again and see if anyone's interested in going. I know it's going to be a good fundraiser, and I know Steve is trying to keep all the money here in the region for people that have Parkinson's or any other type of neurological disorder. So, I mean, I would make that motion, and we'd do the same thing for the previous one.
Okay. Well, we've got two motions, but we can do, a motion by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Maves, that we send out a notification to everyone about the two fundraisers that we have in front of us, both the mini putt and also for the Parkinson's roast fundraiser. Motion, all those in favor? Okay? And that's unanimous, passed. All right, thank you very much. And on behalf of all the residents, thanks, Steve. Thanks for sticking around, and thanks for making your mark.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Tina Kint, CEO of the Alzheimer Society Niagara Region, and she is here to talk about her 17th Annual Coffee Break Campaign. Ms. Kint, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor of Udonia, members of council, please stop. Members of the public, it is Tina Kint, CEO of the Alzheimer Society of Niagara Region and Foundation. I thank you very much for being on today's speech tonight about our 17th Annual Coffee Break Campaign. Also with me tonight is Anne Vadechich from our board director and foundation. This concept was the inspiration of our own Niagara's chapter, and has evolved into a nationwide fundraiser for societies across Canada, where millions of dollars have been raised. National Coffee Break is next Thursday, September 20th, where we're expecting about 10,000 coffee breaks to take place across this country. Locally, we run it as a campaign September to December. An Alzheimer Coffee Break is a time where you invite your coworkers, clients, families, fam, sorry, neighbors to enjoy a cup of coffee or any other preferred beverage at a break time for a specific get-together in exchange for donations. Coffee Break events are held in homes, workplaces, community centers, schools, churches, city halls, retail outlets, just about anywhere. Some of the most successful coffee breaks have been involved in doing something a little bit different. An open house, a barbecue, a raffle, dress-down days, selling coffee cup details, or rounding up your batch at the register. Every break makes a difference, and it affects all of us. Hosting Coffee Break is fun, social, and very easy to organize. Our society supplies a kit, and you supply the people. Each good kit includes a package of coffee, a donation box, promotional signs and literature, and all the things you need to conduct this Coffee Break. While many of the Alzheimer Coffee Breaks in Canada will be held on the national day, you can certainly choose a date that's more convenient for you, since our campaign runs until December. Keith Abbot, the franchisee of the Ball Farm location at Fairview Mall of East St. Cavan's, is this year's honorary chair. Keith will kick off our campaign on September 20th from 11:00 to 1:00 PM at his location with coffee and cake. While participating at Ball Farm stores in the Niagara region, we'll be asking customers for donations to registers during the month of September in exchange for a donation. It must be emphasized that Alzheimer's disease and related dementia are not part of normal aging. It is a chronic disease which slowly destroys memory and reasoning, he grows independence, and eventually takes life. Currently, there is no cure or effective means to which to relate onset or misprogression. It is described as a disease of many losses, robbing a person of their mind and taking them away from their loved one. It is estimated that 1 in 11 Canadians over the age of 65 are suffering from Alzheimer's disease or related dementia. Here in Niagara, we have a unique challenge, because we have one of the highest percentages of seniors per capita, and yet we lack the available geriatric resources compared to most other communities. Currently, there is approximately 8,200 people in Niagara who are experiencing progressive dementia. These numbers are on the rise. Within a generation, dementia may affect more than 1 million people across Canada. This means that one will develop dementia every two minutes, which is currently an alarming increase from the five minutes that it is now. While most people consider dementia to be a disease of the elderly, we know that 71,000 Canadians living with dementia are under the age of 65. We also know that people that are diagnosed earlier, they have a unique and strong position to have their voices heard and obtain the support and resources that they need to continue living meaningful lives. This year, the World Health Organization has declared dementia to be a public health priority on a nationwide scale. This burden of dementia can no longer be overlooked. People with dementia are prone to cycles of emergency department use, hospitalization, and deterioration. Acute care hospital bed gridlock is what it's being called. We need dementia strategies as part of the alternative level of care in this crisis, and we must focus our strategies at government levels. A recognized leader in the field of dementia, the Alzheimer Society of Niagara Region, is committed to working in partnership with people who have dementia, their caregivers, and the broader community. Our goal is to enhance safety and independence in their homes and community, strengthen resilience and coping capacity, and ensure that people living with dementia continue to participate in family and community life. A range of services and programs are available along the continuum of care that respond to the individual need of home-based support, education, and socialization. Every year, our foundation funds for approximately $600,000 on a $1.8 million budget. A Coffee Break is our signature event. Thanks to the approximately 300 hosts across the region, last year we raised over $71,000. This year, more than ever, we need to count on everyone's support to raise our goal of $100,000. When you host a Coffee Break in your home, your workplace, or part of the social group you belong to, you will be a champion for those individuals and family in Niagara, your neighbors, those that need your support. I encourage each and every one of you to consider hosting your own Coffee Break and leaving your coffee account. All the funds raised stay here in the Niagara region. Anyone who can host a Coffee Break simply by calling the Alzheimer Society at (905) 687-3914, or visiting our website at AlzheimerNiagara.ca. And thank you so much for your time and listening today this evening for this worthwhile endeavor. And I do have your Coffee Break kits. Are you there, dear?
Thank you very much, Ms. Kint. Is there any questions or comments for Tina? Tina, are we getting any closer? I mean, I know there's a lot of treatments, a lot of people with dementia and Alzheimer's. Are we, you know, any breakthroughs? Are we getting any better at dealing with it, or any advice in that way?
Well, advice is to keep your healthy brain, maintain a healthy brain. But we are getting closer. There's a lot of good jobs on the market to, again, neighborhood and reduce food stations, but not here.
Not yet. Well, we've got to keep raising money till we get to that point. Well, we are very happy to accept your kit, and we're happy to help through the city, through our staff rooms, to try to draw some awareness and some attention to some much-needed funds for your Coffee Break campaign.
Thank you.
What's that?
We have coffee.
We have more. Okay. How much is the kit? No, how much are they costing?
We get all the kits, both parts, my space.
Oh, nice. Very good. I'm looking. No candy. There's coffee, though. There's coffee. All right, thank you very much, Tina. All right, moving on to the formal part of me. I don't know if anybody's noticed, too. Council chambers have recently had a little bit of an upgrade, a little bit of a facelift, fresh coat of paint, some newer carpeting, and a lower podium. In the past, we had a great big podium that a lot of the councillors couldn't even see who was standing up at the front. So a little bit of a freshening up. So it's a little cleaner, a little fresher. Onto the planning matters. We're looking at public meeting AM 2011 009, zoning bylaw amendment application, and I would ask the city clerk if you would please introduce the next floor item.
Your worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed three-unit residential dwelling at 6871 O'Neill Streets. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 10th, 2012, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I ask Mr. Hirlovich, our Director of Planning, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, worship. This application involves the former Avondale store at the corner of Dorchester and O'Neill. You can see the property on the screen. In fact, this is the area that's parking now. It's become a lawn area in front of the building. The property is at the northeast corner of Dorchester and O'Neill. It's largely a residential area. The application itself is to convert the existing building, or at least apply for a zoning change, to an R3 zone to allow the building to be converted to three residential units. So as you can see, the large portion of the paved area around the building next to Dorchester and O'Neill will become landscaped. A new parking lot will be created in the rear yard of the building, which is to the east, which would accommodate four parking spaces for those three residential units. There are a number of site-specific zone requirements needed to recognize existing lot conditions. So the current lot size is 6,695 square feet. That would be recognized. There's an interior side yard of 4.6 feet. That would be recognized. The lot frontage on Dorchester is 45.6 feet. That would be recognized. The existing setback of the building from O'Neill would be recognized at the current setback of 8.2. The proponents are also asking for the opportunity to create new front steps to the residential units, and those would be 0.7 of a meter back from the street line. That would be about two feet. And lastly, the parking area that's to be created, there's a bylaw requirement that specifies 40 square meters. This parking lot, in order to accommodate the four cars and maneuvering aisles, requires a parking area of 157 square meters. The zoning is, as I said, to allow the existing building to be converted into its three dwelling units. The property is currently zoned R1B, which permits single-family dwellings. However, as you know, this building has been used as a convenience store from prior to 1970 right up until 2010. We did hold a neighborhood meeting. A number of neighbors did come out. They spoke about concerns regarding traffic, drainage, lighting, privacy, tenants, and the density of the site. Most of these will be addressed through either the site planning or the zoning on the property. There's also one letter in your bound package, and there's another one in your handout tonight. The proposal is consistent with the provincial policy statement, which encourages intensification and efficient use of urban lands. The official plan designates the lands as residential, so this would go to a residential use. Proposed use is compatible with the surrounding residential uses. Resulting density conforms with the anticipated density expected on an arterial road. There's a road widening and daylighting triangle required along Dorchester Road. That would be secured through this process. And we're recommending that, or the region is asked that there be a holding symbol applied to the property pending a record of site condition, because it has been used as commercial. It would now be used as a residential property. As I mentioned, the property is currently R1B. The applicant is asking for an R3 zone. I've already outlined the site-specific zone changes. The proposal to convert the existing dwelling into a three-unit building would remove the legal non-conforming commercial use. We see that as beneficial, because the building is existing. The interior side yard, exterior side yard, frontage, and area are all established. There is a request to reduce the exterior side yard for the front porch. Again, that's only logical. It needs to provide access to two dwelling units. There's a reduced lot area and frontage. I've mentioned that. The parking spaces are core parking spaces required. And although it's a larger parking area than the bylaw currently would provide under an R3 zone, there's still 30% of the lot which will be landscaped, and in fact, this would be an improvement over what we have today. As well, I mentioned that there would be the existing parking areas in front of the building along Dorchester and O'Neill that would be grassed. The neighbor to the north has expressed concern about the parking area. He notes today in his concerns about stormwater runoff from the parking lot. That would be part of the site plan requirements that would address that. He also was concerned about noise. Therefore, we're recommending that there be a six-foot-high wood privacy fence erected not only on the north property line, but also along the east property line to ensure privacy and some noise attenuation for the abutting residential properties. That would be part of the zoning requirements. I mentioned already a record of site conditions required by the region, and therefore an H symbol would be applied. So in conclusion, we find that the application conforms with the official plan. It would propose an appropriate reuse of a vacant commercial building. Subject property maintains sufficient landscaping, there's sufficient onsite parking. The concerns of the residents can be addressed through the site plan control process. We're therefore recommending that council approve this zoning bylaw amendment application, and that we would include the holding provision for record of site condition, and that prior to the issuance of a building permit, a site plan agreement will be necessary with the city. Those are the highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Hirlovich. Are there any questions of council? Seeing none, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission of this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is anyone here to speak to this other than the applicant? Okay, moving on. Council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative.
Yeah, worship, my name is Stan Shaflarsky. I am the agent to this application, and mainly I wanted to thank you for the good presentation of the project. We did spend quite a bit of time with the city staffs. We went through the process of public consultations, and the full illustrations of the proposed changes to the present building were submitted. We reviewed with the neighbors, and it appears to me that everything is in proper order. And it was a pleasure to work with the staff, and it seems to me that the proposed changes to the building will be a significant improvement to the neighborhood. It will really fit into the adjacent residential dwellings, and will provide the proper intensifications to the additional housing at the available land. We will, at the same time, resolve all the matters of accessing to the property, the making the proper parkings on the side, on the east side of the dwelling. And at the front, at the presently, as you could see, the arch vault will be turned into a proper landscaping, where you are in compliance with the zoning provisions. The submissions, as you have seen, the adjustment of those numbers are based on the already reduced properties. Deed of the land was already created, and the daylight triangles and road widening is already deed to the city at the present time. I would be pleased to answer any additional questions concerning this application. I hope that the application will be approved.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments of council? Seeing none, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Councillor Thompson? Motion by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Morocco to move the recommendation. Is there any discussion to the motion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, worship.
The next planning item, PD 2012 54. I would ask the city clerk to introduce this next item.
Your worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit the expansion of the parking lot at Patterson Funeral Home located at 5818 Pier Street and 6062 and 67, 6076 Main Street. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 10th, 2012, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Hirlovich, if you would please explain the reason and purpose for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, worship. The application involves the Patterson Funeral Home. There's an air photo on the screen depicting the whole of the properties that are involved with the Patterson Funeral Home business. There are two matters that are before council tonight. One is the addition of one lot. It's a darker blue lot. It's the darker blue lot on the screen, which extends from the funeral home property north to Pier Street. The funeral home fronts onto Main Street just south of Pier. The, so the proposal is to rezone that property from residential to general commercial to allow for the property to be used for parking purposes in conjunction with the funeral home. Properties to the east of the lot are used for residential purposes. The properties along Main Street are commercial. Again, the site plan shows the layout of the property, and so 5818 Pier Street is just the one lot which would be used for parking, would provide a driveway access to Pier Street. All of the parking would then be interconnected, so that parking anywhere would be provided for the funeral home. The property is currently zoned residential, as I mentioned, and would be used in conjunction with the funeral home. The applicant has also requested that we pass a deeming bylaw to deem the south end of the property, that's Lot J, in Plan 267, not to be a plan of subdivision. This will allow the lot to merge on title so that all of the property will be dealt as one. The official plan for the area designates the area as minor commercial. The consolidation of properties is encouraged by the official plan to ensure functionality and to ensure more efficient and intensive utilization of land. The lands in the Drummondville area are encouraged to develop with compact building form close to the sidewalk. A minor expansion of the parking lot area for the funeral home is within the intent of the official plan. Property is zoned R2, as I mentioned. The proposal is that it would be zoned general commercial, GC, which would permit it to be used for commercial purposes. That is the parking lot. This is the same zoning which is already in place on the commercial lands on Main Street, so it's contiguous to that zone. The applicant has also requested site-specific regulations, which would be, excuse me, permit the required parking for the funeral home to be provided on any of the properties that are owned by the funeral home. That's already on there for the portions of parking which exist, so that would be extended to the rest of that. The funeral home itself, excuse me, has a surplus amount of parking. The bylaw actually only requires 15 parking spaces. The funeral home actually will provide 75 parking spaces. As I mentioned, the deeming bylaw has been requested. The current funeral home went through an expansion, and the building actually straddles the lot line on Lot J, so we're recommending that a deeming bylaw be passed to proclaim Lot J not to be a lot in a plan of subdivision, and this would allow the lot to merge with the adjacent properties under the same ownership name, and then would allow them to develop as one with common parking. This satisfies building and zoning matters. The parking lot itself will be part of the site plan. There's a site plan agreement already on the property, and that site plan agreement would address access, paving, drainage, fencing, landscaping. Therefore, we conclude that the application is consistent with the minor commercial designation in the official plan, and although in different ownership, the lands are contiguous, and the properties can be used as one through the zoning, the passing of the deeming bylaw will allow all of the properties to merge in title under one ownership. Therefore, we're recommending that council pass the zoning bylaw application and to pass the deeming bylaw as well. Those are the highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Hilevich. Are there any questions of our director of planning? Seeing none, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting any appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here to speak to this other than the applicant? Okay? Seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. We'd like you to consider our application to rezone this property 5818 Pier Street that's currently zoned residential to commercial so that we can add to our parking lot. Although we do have sufficient parking and we meet bylaw, we feel that we can never have enough parking on certain occasions, and it also allows another access for our people to be able to leave the parking lot other than going onto Main Street or going onto another street that's less busier for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, or counsel Morocco? Okay, well, we still have the public meeting. Is there any questions first to the application? Seeing none, we will then close the public meeting. Got a motion by Counselor Morocco and Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I just want to say what a phenomenal job that they've done with the home on Main Street and really the catalyst to make everything else happen there. It truly is a magnificent improvement, and I think you ought to cut down a little bit on the flowers, they're too bright when I go in there, so anyway, great job.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Here, we have a motion by Counselor Morocco, second by Counselor Thompson to move the recommendation. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next on, I would ask our fire chief if he would introduce the next report and presentation.
Thank you, worship. Through a council report from January of 2011, a station location study, a fire station location study was approved and authorized, and it was undertaken, and we're here to provide the presentation through the consultants that were hired. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Deputy Chief Phil Ross in attendance here in support of the presentation, and also members of the fire department that are here representing the Niagara Falls Professional Firefighters Association and led by Todd Bruny. So I would like to introduce to you Mr. Jim Goff, who is the senior project manager and partner of Triple M Group Limited, and also Peter Sells, who's a fire specialist and president of Nivo Nuvo Consulting Incorporated.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, your worship, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I assume I've got control of the presentation?
If you want control, or if you want to give me control, it's up to you.
I'm a bit of a control freak, so. Well, we can fight over it, but maybe later. Anyway, thank you again. So here's the agenda of what we're going to cover. I think I've got about 30 minutes of presentation to go through, and then we can go through questions and answers, of course. So we'll start off just by a little bit on the issues and the context that we've addressed through the study. Document the existing coverage that you have now from the six stations you have. Summarize the rationale for what we think is the need to expand fire services coverage. Talk about the constraints and the coverage objectives here in the city of Niagara Falls. Specifically, talk about the rail corridor. That's been a fairly important issue in the study as we've gone forward. Go through the alternatives for the station locations that we've analyzed. Document the preferred alternative for you, and then get into a little bit of discussion on operational considerations and suggested implementation plan for you to consider. So these three sentences really, I think, encapsulate what we were charged with by Chief Smith and Deputy Chief Ross. First, to plan for appropriate service coverage as growth and other changes occur in the municipality. To recognize that this plan is going to be supplemental to the city's existing fire master plan, and that the resulting plan has to be a very practical, cost-effective, and implementable set of actions for the city to move ahead with. So to summarize the issues that we've addressed, this is what we were told right off the bat. It was really that Niagara Falls is a small city with big city issues, and some of those issues include the amount of projected hotel and residential development. The hotels particularly in the form of high-rise and also significant residential. The amount of visitor activity that you see here in the city, which I'm sure everyone's familiar with, it's hard to escape. Actually, if you live anywhere in the Golden Horseshoe, you must know about that. So that's in terms of the day visitors and overnight visitors as well, and there's also the issue of cross-border traffic to take into consideration. And finally here, the Station 4 response was an issue that was highlighted for us. Station 4 is the busiest volunteer station you have. Right now, it is currently meeting their weekday staffing challenges, but as with all volunteer stations across the province, that is sometimes a challenge. There has been a recent intake of volunteers.
Excuse me, sorry, on that point, Counselor?
Your worship, and I guess to you as a representative, thank you for being here. When you say that it's the busiest volunteer station, do you know the numbers?
I'm sure they're in our report. I don't recall them offhand. I think it's about 200 calls per year.
200 per year?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
There has been a recent intake of 20 volunteers for Station 4, but there is a certain training timeline that needs to occur, and that does limit their capacity and their capabilities in the short term. And finally, under Station 4 as well, some growth is projected in the Chippewa area, which is the area covered by Station 4. Now, in terms of the context for the study, transportation is an important piece of the analysis that we look at, and there's a few key considerations that we had to take into account. First of which is the CN/CP rail corridor, which really is a barrier to response into the north side of the city. There's numerous places where there are at-grade road crossings over the rail corridor. Also, any accident on the railway line could develop into a major emergency itself, and trains these days are very long, up to three to four kilometers, and they can block a significant proportion of the road crossings. So that's a real issue. We understand, from talking to city staff, that grade separation had been considered in the past to try to meet that challenge, but it hasn't been seen as a viable option either due to cost or community impact or some combination thereof. Secondly, the Queen Elizabeth Way is also a barrier to response east-west in terms of the limited number of crossings that there are and the amount of traffic congestion that occurs across those very restricted numbers of crossings. And finally, something else we've included in the study is looking at traffic calming in the city. So we've assessed the city's existing traffic calming measures and proposals for how those are incorporated and how our fire services staff are given the opportunity to comment on those. A second piece of the context is really development, and there is major development underway in the city, particularly in the southern part of the city and also in the southwestern part of the city. In addition, there's a number of high-rise hotels that are proposed downtown. In summary, we've been given to understand that there's the highest proportion of high-rise development here to population of any city in North America, which I think really highlights some of the challenges that you do face here. In all of these points, the transportation piece and the development piece together really, we think, highlight the need for considering additional firefighting resources. Now, population is an important factor in terms of understanding the amount of coverage and the location of coverage as well. So we've gone through a detailed review of the city's population projections and their distribution across the city, and we've really kind of grouped the major development areas into Area A and Area B that you see on the screen there. And we were given projections for three horizons, 2016, 2026, and 2031. And there's a significant amount of population increase projected in those two highlighted areas from the low end of 8350 up to the high end of possibly 14,500 population. So that's a significant increase over what's there today, and we need to take that into account. So from that base level of population that's projected, we really needed to understand the population as it needs to be served by fire services, and that's a key determinant of the resources needed. So we start off with the resident population of 82,000 from the 2006 census. Then we have to consider the daytime visitors, which average about 49,000, though it ranges from 27 up to approximately 74,000, with approximately half of that staying overnight in hotels. So the overnight hotel guests average about 24,000 people. So you really need to look at that combined resident plus visitor population as the population which requires coverage by the fire services. Fire services need to offer protection for all of that population. So in summary, the effective population that needs to be served averages 131,000, and it can be up to 156,000 in summer. And the last point here indicates that that effective population is actually expected to grow as the city continues to grow and as attractions are added in the city, up to as high as 160,000 to 180,000 by 2021. So that's really quite a significant population, far beyond what the resident population of 82,000 was in 2006. So from that, from that understanding of the population to be served, that's where we went into an analysis of the fire services staffing that's really required to address that population. So right now, you have an existing staff of 116 responding career firefighters augmented by 104 volunteers. We've looked at 18 comparable fire departments across Ontario to try to understand what that really means in terms of the effective staffing you have in terms of career-equivalent responding firefighters, to give kind of a level playing field for this comparison. So that gives a ratio of 17.4 firefighters per 20,000 population, based on the summer peak of 156,000 population that we're trying to serve. But going up to 2021, that ratio is expected to decline to 15.11 firefighters per 20,000 population. Then we compared those ratios to industry guidelines and to best practices across Ontario, and that really indicates that there's a growing staffing deficiency projected in the city. So then we looked at what would be the appropriate.
Mr. Goff, sorry, we have another question from Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I guess, to our speaker. You said comparing these ratios to industry guidelines. What are the industry guidelines right now? I'm just wondering if we're understaffed right now? That's basically my question.
Yes, essentially, you know, looking at the guidelines, you would be understaffed.
What are the industry guidelines?
Peter, do you have the details in terms of the ratios?
What, thank you for your question. What we did to come up with those ratios was essentially we looked at the current staffing on average across Ontario for similarly sized communities and similar models of fire service delivery. And for full-time career-staffed departments across Ontario, greater than 50,000 people, it works out on average just about one firefighter per thousand, or 20 for 20,000, if you will, like 0.998. The ratio that we use to determine an appropriate staffing for composite fire departments would be to take the number of career firefighters, look at, multiply that by 1,000, look at the, subtract that from the population overall, if you're still with me. Then take that number of 1,000 and divide it by the number of career, sorry, number of volunteers that are available, which gave us a ratio of 5:1. Using that model is how we determine the ratios here. The industry guidelines, so that speaks to industry practices. Industry guidelines essentially would come from the fire underwriters, the insurance industry. And again, their expectations are based on that, on that 1 per 1,000 ratio of career-equivalent firefighters.
And is there no guidelines that come from the fire marshal's office?
Fire marshal's office basically has you match risk to, match deployment to risk, but doesn't tell you how to do it. To, because not every, not every community in Ontario has the same, has the same means to staff, and so they actually deliberately do not do that, in terms of a hard and fast ratio. They don't do that.
Counselor Carrion?
Thank you, your worship. When you're using the, or you're calculating the numbers, you use the visitor population, you included the visitor population in with the residential population?
Yes.
Did you take into consideration that the visitor population is only, how did you adjust for the only three months a year? That that visitor population, the numbers that... That that visitor population, the numbers that you're showing on the study, is really only June, July, and August?
It peaks in June, July, and August, but the figures we had indicate that it is still significant in December, January, February. The low would be, I don't know if we have a low on there, we had an average.
We had range.
Yeah.
So you did take that into consideration?
We did take that into consideration, but we were also mindful that we needed to cover the peak, not the valley.
Yeah. And also, could I just ask, when you did use this, because it made me think, when you're looking at visitors, are you using overnight guests, or are you looking at day guests when you're doing the number of visitors?
We looked at both, and we actually spoke to both. And I believe the ratios we did were based on, were based on daytime visitors, on the theory that a daytime visitor can just as easily have a need of an emergency response, whether it be a car fire or a medical response, or, you know, that's a person in a restaurant or a person in a store that can, that can require a fire rescue. So we, the peak numbers that we used were daytime.
Okay.
With half of the visitors understood to be staying overnight.
Okay. We good for now, councillors? Okay, thank you.
Just to add one more point on that, we actually did look at the pattern of response by season within the city as well, and that's documented in the report. So there wasn't that much of a seasonal fluctuation, really, but we want to make sure we're addressing the really critical level of population. So just to finish up this slide, so what we're suggesting is that the addition of 20 firefighters in the short term would bring the Niagara Falls ratio up to the Ontario average of 20 per 20,000 population. So effectively, that's bringing it to that best industry practice of 1 per 1,000. And, you know, I think it's important to remember that that brings you to the average, but Niagara Falls does have some special risks in terms of the amount of high-rise development, the cross-border traffic, the gorge, all of those things that really combine to make Niagara Falls unique. So this brings you to the average, but I think someone could even make the case that there could be a case for going higher than that. Now, the next part of the study was to look at the coverage from the existing fire stations, and this is really a geographic information systems-based analysis, and we've looked at the existing coverage based on a four-minute travel time, and that's an industry best practice for first response from fire stations. And we've also included the issue of the rail corridor blockage, and also the city's transportation network is also factored into this type of analysis. So we've looked at a number of coverage statistics, including major gap areas outside the four minutes travel time, and what kind of development is in those gap areas now, and what kind of development is proposed in those gap areas, the percentage of the urban area served, the number of schools served, and the number of proposed hotels that are served as well, because that is significant in this case. So throughout the report, you'll see a number of figures like this, and there's two figures. The one on the left is the case where there's no blockage of the rail corridor, which runs kind of diagonally through the city, about two-thirds of the way up. And then on the right side, you see the same kind of projection of response, assuming that there is a blockage of the rail corridor. And so the colored areas are the four-minute travel time contours around each station, and those are all shown in different colors. So Station 3 at the top is green, Station 1 is kind of a brown color in the middle top, Station 2 is the pink color, Station 4 is the brown color in Chippewa, and then the two stations in the south are the other two volunteer stations in the green and the kind of purple-blue color. And you can see, actually, that there are some significant gap areas in the city. There's that band of white running across kind of the south-central area of the city from the river all the way to the western boundary. And there's also quite a bit of developed area on the west side, right in the middle of the city, just west of the Queen Elizabeth Way, that is not covered by Station 2, or by Station 3, or by Station 1. So that's a fairly significant gap area, and that, as you can see by the street network there, that's already quite significantly developed. And the other thing you can see, comparing the figure on the left to the figure on the right, is that if there is a rail blockage, it does have a significant impact on the amount of coverage you can get from Station 1, which is the brown contour. So when there's a rail blockage, that contour is significantly reduced. Station 1 really can't get across to provide any assistance to Station 3 in the north, or vice versa. Station 3 would not be able to get across and provide assistance to Station 1. So just to sum up, the need to enhance the fire services, looking at in particular the array of stations right now, the current arrangement of the fire stations, it does provide pretty good coverage to the downtown core, but there's really very little overlap among the fire stations. There's really not a lot of depth of coverage in the case of a major incident. There are also significant service gaps in areas of budding the CN rail line, and also a number of other areas. There's only a small number of critical facilities, such as schools, that are covered within a four-minute travel time, and the current configuration really cannot provide effective first response coverage to the projected development areas of the city, which we mentioned are primarily in the south and the southwest. So that really led us to look at alternatives for station locations, and there are four that I'll talk about. So the first one was to develop a new station close to the intersection of Lundys Lane and KLR Road. I should emphasize, we're not talking about specific properties here. It's really a station in that vicinity, just for frame of reference. And the second part of alternative 1 was to relocate Station 2 to approximately the intersection of Stanley Avenue and MacLeod Road, and the intention there was to try to get better coverage into the downtown area by moving that station a little bit closer. Station 2 was to add two new stations on the west, one near the intersection of Thoroldstone Road at KLR Road, and the second new station at MacLeod Road and KLR Road, and also, again, as with alternative 1, to relocate Station 2 to approximately the intersection of Stanley and MacLeod. Then, alternative 3, Station 2 in this case would remain in its existing location. There would be a new Station 7 at approximately the intersection of Lundys Lane and KLR Road, and we would consider Station 4 for conversion to full-time or career staffing at some point when conditions warrant. Station 4, the last of the alternatives, Station 2 would remain in its existing location. There would be the new Station 7 at Lundys Lane and KLR Road, and Station 4, in this case, would be moved northwest as far as possible towards the downtown to provide more coverage into downtown, but still cover Chippewa. And it would also be considered for full-time or career staffing when conditions warrant. So we went into the detailed geographic information systems analysis of those four alternatives. So these next four maps show the first response coverage from those. So this is alternative 1, with the new station at approximately the intersection of KLR Road and Lundys Lane, and you can see the contour of that, it's kind of a light brown color. Station 2 would be relocated further east, so again, it's got that pink contour around it. Unfortunately, doing that, that move, together with the new station on the west, still leaves a fairly significant gap area between the new Station 7 and the relocated Station 2, and we've just pointed to that with the green arrow there. And we've also shaded in the major development areas here, so those are the brown striped areas. So you can see how much of that area is covered or not covered by each alternative. So there's a fair bit of that development area, which is still left uncovered if you do that, though in Chippewa, most of the proposed development area is well-covered by the existing location. Then, looking at alternative 2, so this is the two new stations on the west, so there's the new one in the northwest, which has the red contour around it, then the brown contour in the kind of central west, and you can see that that still leaves quite a bit of gap area right in the middle of the city, kind of between the new Station 7 and Station 1 in the northeast, and Station 2 on the southeast. So that also probably does not provide optimal coverage to either existing development areas, or to a lot of the development areas you can see in the center. Alternative 3 is where we have a new Station 7 at the intersection of Lundys Lane and KLR Road, and we leave Station 2 where it is. So you can see Station 2 with the pink contour around it, and the new Station 7 with the beige-brown contour around it. And it does, this alternative does provide good coverage of both the existing development area on the west side of the city, which was not covered, and it also provides coverage of a lot of the new development area that's happening, kind of in the west-southwest area. And Station 2 does provide pretty good coverage of the development area in the southwest. A lot of it's covered within four minutes, and a good deal more of it will be covered in five to six minutes. Alternative 4, which was involving the new Station 7 on the west that you see there, as well as relocating Station 4 from Chippewa closer to downtown. So relocating Station 4, it provides a bit better coverage, but it doesn't quite reach into downtown in four minutes. Basically, the new area you'd be covering is largely undeveloped, and so there's not a lot of marginal benefit to moving Station 4 like that. And you would also now have a bit of a gap area in the south end of Chippewa, which is the area in Chippewa that's proposed to be developed. So there really wasn't a lot of benefit to relocating Station 4. So from that analysis of the four alternatives, we looked at those and compared them to try to define the preferred alternative. All of them provide coverage of similar numbers of schools and the proposed hotels. Alternative 2 does provide the best overall coverage when we look at the amount of the urban area covered on an numerical sense, but it does leave a large gap in the center of the city, which is already developed, and the cost would also be the highest of the four alternatives for alternative 2. Alternative 4 has the advantage of providing slightly better coverage to the higher risks downtown while still covering most of the existing area of Chippewa, but this would require building two new stations, and the developing area on the south side of Chippewa would be largely beyond four minutes travel time. So there's questionable benefit, really, in terms of moving that station from Chippewa. So the last point here, alternative 3 appears to provide the best balance between coverage and capital cost. It covers the development areas in Chippewa, and it also covers the existing development area on the west, and provides pretty good coverage on the southwest as well. So just to conclude, in terms of the preferred alternative, we do think alternative 3 is preferred, which the key recommendation is the proposed development of Station 7 in the vicinity of Lundys Lane and KLR Road. And we have considered the issue of the rail corridor blockage here, and in the event of a rail corridor blockage, Station 7 can provide better coverage to the north side of the rail corridor, because even the longest train can't block all of those intersections. So this does provide better coverage across the city if a significant train is in, on the tracks blocking part of it. And it does provide good coverage to the areas of proposed development in the south and southwest, and greatly improves coverage west of the QEW, which is not very well-served right now. We do have a couple of supplementary recommendations as well, which is to, first of which is to consider relocating one apparatus from Station 1 to Station 2, which would provide better backup coverage to Stations 4, 5, and 6, the volunteer stations. So that would be moving one apparatus slightly to the south from the headquarters Station 1, a little bit further south. And we're also suggesting that coverage provided by Station 4 be monitored to determine whether conversion to career-based staffing is warranted in the future. And there was one thing I didn't mention, which I should have on the last slide, which was that we have reviewed in detail the report that was provided by the Firefighters Association. It's a very detailed report, and we certainly commend them on that, and it was good to see that they were largely in agreement with our recommendation to provide the one new station on the west side. So we felt that provided a little bit more corroboration to what we were recommending. I didn't want to forget that. And just to wrap up, we do have a suggested implementation plan in the report, and it's divided into short-term actions, which you see here, and then medium-to-long-term actions. So the short-term actions are, first, to acquire the property for, and then build the new full-time station in the vicinity of Lundys Lane at KLR. Second, acquire a new apparatus for that new Station 7. Third, initiate the staffing process for the new station by hiring additional firefighters, working towards the ultimate staffing of 20 additional firefighters at some point. And fourth, consider redeploying either Area 1 or Rescue 1 from Fire Station 1 to Fire Station 2. And the last slide, the medium-to-long-term actions in the implementation plan are to initiate the monitoring of the volunteer staffing and the response capabilities for Fire Station 4, to see if it does meet the criteria for conversion to full-time career staffing at some point. And in the report, we've given a number of triggers, or conditions, or criteria that you might want to consider when you're looking at that issue of, should you convert Fire Station 4 to a full-time fire station? And those are listed here. So there's five criteria, including the population in Chippewa, or the effective population in terms of residents plus visitors across the city, whether that crosses that threshold of additional 20,000, or if the industry standard response guidelines are consistently not being met by Station 4. Or the last two, if there's not really sufficient response being provided by Station 4, either in terms of the number of calls that it must respond to, or the number of firefighters that can be mustered for Station 4 to provide effective response. So that concludes our presentation. I hope it wasn't too technical, and we look forward to any questions. Thank you.
Okay, we're looking for some questions or council comments. I have actually a couple of questions myself. One of them was on your slide regarding context transportation. I don't see, they're not numbered, I don't think. Oh yeah, it is, number five, slide five. My question was, we talked about the CNCP rail corridor. Wait till you get that slide up. Yep, that's the one. So my question is, at the top here, we talked about the CNCP rail corridor, and a number of us, including myself and councillor Thompson, are on a committee that we're looking at options and alternatives to rerouting the train. You may or may not know, it comes through the city and then leaves the city, but it never actually crosses in the city, and we're looking at that as an option. How much of a factor is the railway in your numbers?
I don't really want to overplay it, your worship, in terms of the importance. We did have a lot of discussion at the steering committee in terms of how important a factor that was, and I wouldn't say it's a key determinant of the factor, it's more, it's more a supplementary rationale for why the recommended alternative 3 is a good one, because you, because you do have that potential blockage, and I realize that your committee is trying to address that, and that was discussed at our steering committee as well. But, you know, railways being railways, and I've dealt with them for a long time, are difficult to deal with.
Yeah.
So I would say it's supplementary the key. Factors really were the existing development on the west side combined with the proposed development that you are seeing in the southwest.
Fair comment. And the other question on that same slide, you recommend implementation of traffic calming measures also affect emergency response. Now, I'm guessing you're referring to things like speed humps and whatnot?
Yes, sir.
So, and again, I'm guessing that's also a supplementary rationale for the preferred recommendation, but I'm just wondering, it's good to note, though, that that is a fact that has to be addressed, that we put in traffic calming measures on the back end, it slows traffic down, including fire trucks, which also, it's another element to deal with. So again, I'm assuming that was also a supplementary-
It was, yes, your worship. And we have provided some detailed recommendations in terms of how fire services personnel can continue to be involved in determining which traffic calming measures are appropriate on which streets in the city. So, for example, we've suggested trying to avoid them on any primary response routes- So, for example, we've suggested trying to avoid them on any primary response routes and also trying to avoid vertical deflection devices, i.e. speed humps, because those really do have a negative impact on speeds for, for fire and also for police and ambulance as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments of council? Okay, seeing none, I guess we're looking for a motion to refer this to staff, moved by Counselor Carrillo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion to the motion? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Sorry, Your Worship. I thought when you asked if there was any other questions, you just meant the presenter.
Oh, I'm sorry. But, yeah, I did, I did. Or in regard to the report itself, or the presentation itself.
Your Worship, like I noticed in the report that the railway is mentioned a bunch of times, and I know that there's a committee, that council had shot in regards to the railway. I know you mentioned it, but is there any chance of ever getting anywhere on that?
Well, Counselor Thompson, do you want to address that one?
I can tell you, there are, are some solutions. And if you have 10 minutes sometime, talk to Red Iss upon. He's deeply involved in this issue for the past many years, and he has some suggestions, and I think we're getting together in the next couple of weeks with the committee to discuss them. But there, there are some real opportunities to, because the train tracks come right through the, the heart of the city, and yet there is absolutely no drop-offs or any reason for it. And it could be taken just on the outskirts of the city very easily, and particularly if we were going to spend $60 million on overpasses to get out of this situation, we certainly could work with a railroad to try to come to some kind of compromise or situation where they can join the tracks out. They can also go directly from Hamilton right over to Fort Erie and over to Buffalo, where they ultimately go. They can go directly down and over the railroad bridge here at Whirlpool without going through the city. So there are lots of alternatives and opportunities that we're looking. We just have to have the, the staff and the council on side to vigorously pursue this, and I think it can happen and save us a lot of problems and a lot of money and a lot of aggravation for trains. We got rid of one train going through the city and no reason why we can't do this one, because it does nothing coming through the city other than interrupt business, traffic, and residential areas, so.
It's a bit of a safety hazard as well, Your Worship.
I think we have at least, at least nine crossings inside the urban area, so, I mean, there's maintenance costs there as well. One of the questions, actually, that I did have for the presenter, sorry. Like I notice in all of the alternatives, the orange area seems to cover on the north side of the track, the west end of our city. Again, is that something that's, that's acceptable to have a fire station respond on the other side of the train track, given the fact that the, there's unpredictability in the sense that the train can come at any time?
Through you, Mr. Victor. We have tried to reflect some of that unpredictability. So backup from the adjacent stations is a factor in terms of making sure that the plan is acceptable, really. So, you know, in the case of the proposed Station Seven, Station Three, the, the northerly station, will be able to provide effective backup to, to most of that area within, you know, I'm just estimating, but likely within, you know, something like a six-minute response time, I would say.
Is that at its current location? One is current location? Okay. Your Worship, I guess then, just one question through you to our chief. In all of the alternatives, it talks about, talks about a new station, and I'm just wondering if, if the city has the current manpower to stop another station, or if that's something that we have to look at in the future? And basically, just any opinion on the, on the overall report? I'm just in here.
Chief. Thank you, Worship. First of all, in addressing the railway crossings, it's true, as Mr. Goff said, the, it's not the major consideration, but every time a truck goes out of the hall, they're wondering whether or not they're going to be stopped at a, at a railway track. It doesn't happen that frequently, but if it does happen, then those resources that form part of an overall initial full alarm response can't get to the call. So we're delayed in doing some critical tasks. And for Station Three area, especially on the, you know, being on the other side of the tracks, it's one truck that can be separated by that track all the way across the city. So the trucks that would have to respond there would have to go around by way of the highway, which is, in, in most cases, they don't know until they get there that they have that, that blockage in front of them. So turning around, going back to the highway and going along, around the long way is a significant delay. If there's a housecar, that can mean, you know, critical seconds. Railway crossing, again, as Mr. Goff said, was a consideration, and primarily when locating Station Seven and looking for an optimal location, it helped to determine whether it went on the north side or the south side of those tracks. And that's why the location is where it is, and that played the role in the precise location of, of the station. But again, because it's a, it's a very infrequent thing, it's not something that we, you know, really need to put forth as a primary consideration, but it is something we have to think about. Also, with respect to the overpasses, we recognize and realize that the likelihood of, from an emergency response perspective, of putting an overpass in is, is very, very slight. So we're working within the boundaries that were provided. We know we're going to have some delays in dealing with those areas, and we're doing the best we can to try and provide optimal coverage as, as we address those, those physical barriers, including QEW itself, not just the railway crossings. Dealing with the staffing issue, and the one question Counselor asked was, are we adequately staffed to be able to reduce certain things? Mr. Goff, again, referred to comparison to other municipalities to have one firefighter per thousand, if that's one way of looking at staffing. The NFPA standards dictate a minimum or a maximum response time that we're supposed to be meeting to, to be able to respond from each of the existing stations to areas within the city. And right now, the travel time that we're supposed to be meeting is four minutes, and that's the NFPA standard. So wherever any of those little stations are located, the circles that are drawn around them are primarily relating to the four-minute response or travel time. And so building another station will give us another four-minute rows that, that is active in that west end area that will help us out a lot to meet that standard. And the final standard that was mentioned, I can't recall who mentioned it, was the OFM Operational Planning Guide, and that's relatively new document that came out that we're really trying to get our heads around at this point. We've done some proactive work to try and deal with that. And I'll give you just an example of what that means as far as the staffing numbers go in accordance with the, the planning guide. They have a critical task matrix, matrix that identifies certain criteria or certain activities on the fire ground that have to be performed by a firefighter, and it identifies different levels of, of risk. So low risk would be like a garage, a moderate risk would be a single-family structured fire, and there's high risk and extreme risks. And that would be high risk for high-rise hotels, et cetera, extreme risk, you know, a chemical plant, dynamite factory, that type of thing. And if we look at the, the majority of the types of buildings that we have in Niagara Falls, they're single-family residential homes, and that would be a moderate risk. And the staffing range to be able to provide adequate coverage, adequate coverage for one single residence, residential fire that took place, which is a two-story, 2,000-square-foot home, no basement, no exposures, which is rare, because normally we have exposures, we have basements and, within the city. The range is from 16 to 43 based on the size of the building. And as the building ended up going up from that, the one I just described, to, you know, a mansion, you would end up going towards that 43 or above. To get those 43 staff on site to be able to adequately perform the functions that need to be done, you have to draw them from wide geographic range. And right now, our current on-duty staffing is 22. We can handle one single-family structured fire at a time, have four staff left over, as long as it's not a complex fire. So we'll send our 18 to that, to that fire. That's the way that it works with our, arranging of our vehicles, four vehicles plus a platoon chief and, and staff aide. And we'll have one truck left in the city to, a full-time truck to respond in the full-time part of the city. We can draw upon the volunteers to, to cover, and we do. We also call back full-time firefighters, but there's a delay in doing that. And if we have multiple fires that are called in at the same time, which we have, you know, fairly routinely multiple calls, and includes medical calls, includes rescues and things that can occur, then we're severely strapped during those times for, for staffing numbers. So 22 in, in our city for on-duty, full-time staffing is not a huge number. And with the risk that we have, those 22 would be the first initial full alarm response that would go to the Hilton, to the casino complex, to any of our large-scale buildings, as well as to any kind of building that's over a single-family structure in, in the city. So we don't have a lot of capacity for those large-scale buildings without going to internal mutual aid to the volunteers, getting as many as we can, pulling our, doing our callbacks to our full-time people. And sometimes that's as much as 45 minutes to get the crews in to, to respond. And then we, we would have to call mutual aid from neighboring municipalities. So that's, again, calling, in all likelihood, volunteer firefighters from Fort Erie, Welland, Thorold, and Niagara Lake to, to respond to, to assist us. So, you know, we're doing very well with the resources that we have, but they are stretched. Sorry, that's a long-winded answer to, to your question, but also with the other, the International Association of Firefighters, GIS location analysis, that also, it supported the station location study we have here as far as a new station in the west end. The 2001 station location study that was done previously here was presented and showed the exact same location for another station. And previous to that, I think it was in the late eighties, eighty-six, eighty-nine, there was a previous study that also identified that same general vicinity for the station next station that would, would come forward. The question that back at, at that time was when? And, you know, everybody talked about the future, and I believe the future is here now.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
That was a good spot.
Okay. Counselor, Counselor Carrillo, do you have a...
Most of my questions were covered under the chief's comments.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments on the report or the presenter? Yes, Counselor Thompson.
Do we have a timeline and when we're looking at this? Obviously, it's next year's budget, but what is, what is the timeline, the target date for working towards?
Ask our CIO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have this come back as part of our budget deliberations for this year. We have the budget schedule in front of us tonight. My hope is that we'd be having the chief make a presentation and deal with this probably in that late fall, again, pending that we approve the budget schedule we have tonight.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then we'll call the vote that's been moved by Counselor Carrillo and seconded by Counselor Thompson to refer this to staff. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to our firefighters that are here today, too. Okay, next item, budget schedule. We've got some options here. I would ask the clerk if he would like to address this one.
Director of Finance.
Our Director, okay. Our Director of Finance? Come on, guys, don't all argue, or who gets to deal with this one? So we've got a budget schedule here.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was just looking at some of the big expenditures that we already have lined up, and I was sitting in the chair and digesting everything. No, the report that you have in front of you, Mr. Mayor, is some options to council. As, as we've talked about, council owns the budget. I mean, you, you nine individuals control how we do the budget, and this past year, the budget went longer than we had, had wanted. Some counselors had raised some concerns about the process. The report attempts to address those concerns and also provides, the largest one was, is to provide, their largest concern that we're trying to address was to provide adequate opportunity for the council to have meaningful input into the budget process. And staff are under the belief that adding additional meetings to our current council schedule would provide adequate opportunity for the council to address that. This year is going to be a, a very extended period of deliberations in the fact that we're looking at a reassessment of everybody's property assessments, and that information won't be available till, at the earliest, the end of the year. So we anticipate that there'll be significant discussion on the impact of the assessment increases or, or shifts that may arise. There are three options in the report for consideration, and certainly staff is available for any questions or clarifications.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. We've got Counselor Thompson and then Morocco.
Well, we have three options. First option was the status quo, which everybody complained about last year. The establishment in two for a budget committee, I think anybody on the council wants to be involved in the discussion on the budget, and to have a separate committee, I think, isn't going to float. It certainly wouldn't float with me, or I'd want to be on the committee as everybody else would, so we got the whole council. So extra meetings looks like option three, and it's what we've done in the past, so unless there's a violent objection to that, I think that's our responsibility and our job, and so I would move option three.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Iannone, that we go for option three. Is there any discussion to, Mr. Clerk?
Just in the past, council's given direction to staff that they don't want to have any budget discussions unless it's covered by COGCO. We haven't talked to COGCO, whether they'll be available for these dates or not, so there could be a possibility that they wouldn't cover these live, just so council knows that.
Counselor Morocco?
I just fully support this, as I think I was probably one of those counselors that actually spoke in, on behalf, I think, of a number of us that weren't happy with the way the presentations came to us or actually just wanted more detail. So I have to say, I do want to thank staff for putting the report and taking the time to bring this forward to us. I greatly appreciate it. I know it's a little bit more time will be needed, but I think it's what is needed for us to make some very viable decisions to move forward in the next budget. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Maves and Peter Angelo?
Your Worship, I think I, I voted for option three, made the motion last time we discussed this, but I think as far as if we have to have additional meetings and COGCO cannot make it, if we advertise the, the meetings properly in the newspaper and various periodicals and news items, can we still have our meetings? I mean, is it really necessary to have COGCO here for everything, as long as we advertise it properly?
Mr. Clerk?
No, obviously, we would do that anyway. We would notify the public that there would be a budget meeting that would be taking place, and when it would be taking place. As mentioned, we could also look at the option if COGCO can film it to rebroadcast it at a later date. If they're not, I know their past position has been if they cover budget meetings, specific budget meetings for us, they have to do it for the other municipalities. I mean, we could look at options of, you know, we've talked internally about streaming meetings on our website, if that's a possibility. So, you know, there's other options that we can obviously look into, and we would obviously be notifying the public to be open and transparent.
Okay, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your Worship, I just want to say that I think it's important that the public actually watch the budget meetings, but it wouldn't matter to me whether it was live or whether it was taped. So I think if Mr. Harifuta can converse with COGCO and as long as they can tape it, I'm fine with that. I don't know about other people on the council. For me, it doesn't have to be live, as long as it's on the air.
Yeah, but the point is, it may not be on the air, so I'll let you know.
Your Worship, then that's something that we need to know, because then, for me, it would change my mind. I think a long time ago, we said that we were going to make the process pop open to the public and that we were going to go in front of the cameras for everything that we did in regards to the budget. We've held true to that for this many years, so I wouldn't want to change that course now.
Yep, Mr. CIO?
Just to that point, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering, as we want to get plans formulated, we're already starting to put things together. If a viable option, if we could do it, if COGCO was not available, even to tape it, if, if an acceptable option would be us simply taping it ourselves and having it running on our website like we have our council meetings, that may be a possibility that we could work out technically, but it wouldn't be on COGCO. We would just have it as a, as a broadcast, not, not a live broadcast, but a tape broadcast just on our, our website. That might be an, an option that we could pretty much guarantee tonight that we could do something like that without having to wait to come back to a next meeting, because we don't know right tonight whether or not COGCO will be able to tape it. And I think we'd like to get on with our plans in terms of getting schedules set.
Counselor?
Oh, Your Worship, not to be argumentative, but I think if you check the demographics of the people that watch council and poll them to see how many have watched the movie online or on, on their computer, I doubt, I doubt that many of them have. I've never done it myself, so I mean, I wouldn't sit in front of the... I've never done it myself, so I mean, I wouldn't sit in front of a computer and watch a council meeting, however, I would obviously sit on my couch and watch a council meeting. There's a big difference. It's easier to fall asleep, yeah.
Yeah, easier to fall asleep, that's right. Okay, so we've got option three, that's been moved and seconded, and staff will get back to us, I guess, with availability of camera. Yep, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I guess I can say, I mean, the other option that no one has floated is the fact that we don't defer our budget presentations. I think we found ourselves in that situation last year, where I think there was three separate occasions where there was a budget presentation that was supposed to be made, and council deferred that presentation, and then council stood up at the very end and said, "This process is taking too long." So really, we can't have it both ways. We either don't approve, I mean, we don't defer our budget presentations, or we allow them to happen.
Counselor Ianoni?
Mr. Mayor, I think the problem became when we started budget deliberations at 10:30 at night, and we've all agreed that, you know, if we're making decisions at 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the morning in regards to budget, none of us are at our best. So, to me, put before us, option three was the only one we had. So, I mean, it's hard for us to criticize staff if they've said, "Look, we'll come in, you come in too," and the only reason we're not going to come in is because COGCO's not going to stream us. I understand the intent of why we did that, but we can't be passed into budget again in the end of May. So if this is the only option we have, it's, why not? If this is the only option we have, it's the only option we have.
Mr. Clerk?
I went through, I didn't do it recently, but I went through when you pass your budgets over the last number of years, it's always been approximately the same time.
Counselor Wing?
In fairness to Counselor Thompson, after Counselor Thompson left as mayor.
COGCO always seemed to have plenty of availability on Monday nights, so maybe if we do go with option three, and they're not available on Tuesdays as we'd like, perhaps we could look at the night prior to the Tuesdays, so we could have the best of all worlds.
Sounds good to me. Yes, Counselor Arifida.
No, control freak. No, I mean, it has nothing to do with the night, it has to do with the whole thing of a budget meeting per se, and COGCO's position in the past is, "We're not covering your budget meeting-only meeting." You know, basically, we're not covering that, because if we did it for you, we'd have to do it for other municipal budget meetings. So it's got nothing to do with Monday, or Tuesday, or Wednesday, or Thursday, it has to do with the fact that it's a specific budget meeting, and they felt if we started covering Niagara Falls budget meetings, they'd have to do it for other municipalities. I mean, we try, we've tried to, you know, fool them in the past and sneak it on our agendas, but...
All right, is there any other discussion to this? I see the dilemma, though, and if COGCO won't cover budget meetings, then what do we do unless we take it on the end of our regular meetings, if we want it to be on COGCO? It's a little bit of...
Or before.
Pardon me?
Or before.
Or before, or we start our meetings earlier?
We've done it before, and we've passed.
Okay, all right, so we're going to, we're going to work with option three, and we're going to hear back from staff on availabilities from COGCO, I guess that'll be a good starting point. So we've got the motion, call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to the mayor's remarks. We did have some, we do have some obituaries to announce. Jan Leek, Library Systems Administrator, passed away suddenly. She's been with us since 1996, was instrumental in the automation of the library catalog and the development of our website and online services at the library. Marjorie Ann Carner, sister-in-law of Lynn Carner, who works in our Building Department. Fortunato Napoli, nono of Teresa Fabro, the Clerk's Department. Salvatore Sammoltari, he's a Niagara Falls retiree who passed away. So our condolences go to the families that lost someone. Number of things I'd like to announce, first off, it'd be important, if I didn't, if I missed this, I'd be in big trouble. My daughter's birthday tonight, Olivia, she was born 9/11, and so I'm not there for her birthday, so happy birthday, Olivia.
Your birthday last week?
Yeah, mine last week, hers, my son's was the day after, my, we all have our birthdays within a few weeks, so, yeah, I'll leave that one, that joke to you, I won't even touch that one. I'd like to acknowledge also, city staff member Jason McLean was in the London Olympics with the women's silver medalist, Tanya Verbeek. Jason is Tanya's strength training coach, and Tanya did win the women's silver medal, which is pretty incredible, and congratulations to Jason for all of his work, working with strength training with Tanya. Number of events that we had going on, Counselor Gates represented us at the 50th anniversary celebration of the opening of the A.C. Douglas Soccer Tournament. On the, we had the International Brotherhood of Electric coworkers who had their provincial baseball championships here in town in August. I was able to go and throw out the first pitch there, and yes, I threw a strike. Heaters Heroes Event at Oaks Park, Mike Strange of Box Run ran his event in town. Counselor Peter Angelo joined me there that day, and it was neat, Jay Cochran was there, he had a wire set up where you could walk across the wire with the balance pole, and I do have to say, it looks a lot easier than it is. And I heard people say, "Well, if I had the big balance pole, or if I had this, if I had that." Let me tell you something, it was two feet off the ground, and we couldn't take one step. Counselor Peter Angelo and I both gave it a shot. He was able to make the walk all the way across, that was with two people holding him up as he went across. Anyone that tells you it's easy, anyone that tells you that with a tether I can do it, I got news for you, it's way harder than it looks. I thought, I can't imagine being up 600 feet and going on a slope with high winds, I can't even imagine that. One mistake and you're done, so thank you to Jay for being there to help Mike's event, and Counselor Peter Angelo as well. Bless you. Niagara Falls Horticultural Society had their 91st Annual Flower and Vegetable Show at the library, had some great winners there, and annual Terry Fox BBQ was held at City Hall. That day, and this is a quick little story for you, there was a fundraiser, there was a draw for Mayor for the Day, and of course, as luck would have it, my daughter Olivia ends up winning the draw, and I said, "Why would you put in for that, of all the things, you know? You could have won the bucks of chocolate." So anyway, she was mayor for the day that day, and she, she was a big help, and it was great having her there. Counselor Peter Angelo represented us at the Philip Morrow Marathon at the YMCA to benefit the Y's youth programming, and as well, Counselor Peter Angelo was at the Michael Abriscado fundraiser for Canada's national boxing team that takes place in Germany, then possibly Thailand. AMO was attended in Ottawa, Counselor Maves, Counselor Morocco, and myself, as well as, we had our CAO, Ken Todd there, as we met with a number of ministers, including Bob Shirelli of Infrastructure and Transportation, Minister Brad Dugood, Economic Development, Minister Matthews of Health, and as well as the Ministry of Natural Resources. So we had a lot of conversations, lots of asks, it was very successful. The Rotary Club of Niagara Falls had a luncheon, I was their guest speaker recently. There was the grand opening of San Francesco Deli on Robinson Street, and I understand Counselor Thompson was there, I was there myself, Jay Cochran was there again with his wire, and it was very successful, and...
Have wire, little trouble.
Yeah. Also, I did want to say that, you know, get your minds out of the gutter, okay, Council, come on now. My joke, your mind, that's all, we'll say it like that. Roundtable, when we had the Mayor's State of the City event, we had a number of suggestions, people filled out suggestions of what they'd like to see done differently. Well, we had a lot of great suggestions, so rather than just, we said the winner would come out for lunch with me, instead, we brought five winners into the city, we brought lunch in from Pla St. Fresca, and we had a great roundtable discussion with lots of great feedback, and it was so successful, we had Carolyn Bones from the Chamber here, we're talking about doing this on a more regular basis, and doing more to get feedback and input, it was a real neat event that we had here. We want to thank Counselor Peter Angelo for representing us when Nick Walenda was in town here, as he had his feet imprinted, and he presented some memorabilia for the Daredevil exhibit at the museum. We had the We Go launch recently with Minister Chan, MPP Crater, and MP Nicholson, as well as Counselors Thompson, and Morocco, and senior staff, as we kicked off our People Mover system here in Niagara Falls, and finally, after many, many years, this started, oh, I'm sorry, and Counselor Maves, I'm sorry, you were there as well, thank you. This started a long time ago, during Counselor Thompson's time as the mayor of the city, and it's great to see it did not die on the vine, that this finally came to fruition, and it's been a successful launch. After the first three weeks, we've had more than a quarter of a million people rider trips on the People Mover system. It's been a big success, and it was really neat, as, you know, I was talking to a number of different restaurateurs, and some of them said it's been the best thing that ever happened to them, they're considering expansions in some of their facilities, which was real nice to see. A&amp;W had their Cruisin' for a Cause to support MS Society. Studio 55 had their grand opening of their hair salon after a big renovation, which is, which is great, nice to see, beautiful-looking building. I went along with our senior staff, our CAO, Economic Development, to, and along with Dale Morton as well, to see Mayor Chris Freel of Branford, along with their senior staff, to discuss some of what has worked for them. In Branford, Counselor Ianoni referenced it many times, and her daughter's gone there, and it's neat to say, they've got two universities and two colleges set up there already. They've got Nipissing, Wilfrid Laurier, Conestoga, and Mohawk, all set up in their downtown, and they're looking to the day when they'll have upwards of 15,000 Wilfrid Laurier students, and what it's done to their downtown has been absolutely incredible. We had our candidate celebration for all the volunteers at Boston Pizza recently. Niagara Falls had their QP, had their mini-put event at Super Put. Niagara Falls were very proud of our Mosquito Ontario Baseball Association Championships. These young boys, 11-year-old, have won the provincials three years in a row, it's a three-peat, I'm sure we'll be hearing from them later, but we're very proud of them. Busker Fest took place last weekend downtown at the Q, brought in large crowd, we're told 25,000 people in attendance, huge success thanks to Lynn's Farm Theater Project, the Downtown BIA, all the people from council, Counselor Ianoni and Morocco that sit on the Downtown BIA for being such a success, and we know there'll be one next year as well. Want to thank Counselor Gates representing us at the 45th Annual Nursing Reunion of the Victoria Hospital from Fredericton, New Brunswick, that were in Niagara Falls. Also, we dedicated the ticket booth area at the Gale Center to Pete May Cuso, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Box Office.
The box office, right, thank you. The box office at the Gale Center, after Pete May Cuso, a good friend of many people in the city, and anyone that's been around the arenas, Anne Oaks Park would know Pete and all of his years of volunteering, and his family was there as well, they're very grateful for that. This past Saturday, we had the Niagara Region Wheelchair Relay at the Niagara Square. Counselor Peter Angelo, our CAO, Ken Todd, myself, my daughter Olivia, we represented the city, and I'm embarrassed to say that we got our butts kicked. We thought we'd be the team to beat, and apparently that wasn't exactly what happened, we had some fun, but we were terrible. And lastly, I do want to mention PC Children's Charity BBQ that took place this weekend, it's theirs. Now, some upcoming events, Red Bull Crash Dice announcement was made, that will be taking place December the 1st here in Niagara Falls on Murray Hill, it'll go from the Skyline Tower down Murray Hill, and then it'll go north onto the River Road. Counselor Maves, did you want to talk about that?
No, I'm just going to be up there.
Okay, no problem. This will be a very major event, it's going to be great for sports tourism, what a buzz I can't get over everywhere I've been going, that's what I'm hearing, everywhere, I'm in Toronto, Branford, I was in Hamilton, that's what everyone's talking about, is Red Bull Crash Dice, we can't believe you guys are going to be having that in Niagara Falls. It's going to be very, very big, and we're at the World Championships in Quebec City, they put big video screens all over. I was at a luncheon today with New York State mayors from along the border, they're envious of some of the activity that's going on here in Niagara Falls, it's very exciting. Couple of upcoming events, as we finish up our announcements here. Big Brothers Big Sisters Annual Golf for Kids is taking place this Friday at Willowdale. QP is having their end-of-summer party at the St. Antoine Hall this Friday night from 6:30 till 1:00. There will be a royal event taking place this Saturday morning, Presentation of the Colors with the Countess of Wessex, she's the wife of Prince Edward, who's the brother of Prince Charles, so we're going to have some royalty in town, and that takes place at Queenston Heights. The Annual Parade of the Unknown Soldier will take place this Sunday, morning at 10:00 a.m. at the Fairview Cemetery, and immediately following at 11:00 a.m. will be the Terry Fox Run at Oaks Park. Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament will be Wednesday, September 19th at Willowdale. The Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee Leadership Day will be Saturday, September 22nd, here in council chambers, 25 selected students from five high schools will be chosen to be at this event. The Greater Niagara General Hospital Second Annual Fall Ball will take place Saturday, September 22nd at the Convention Center. Tickets are available at the GNGH Foundation office, it will be a formal event. The Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at Club Italia on Wednesday, September 26th, doors open at 6:00 a.m. The event starts at 7:00 a.m., and I should mention that we have Michael Korn there as the guest speaker this year. It's a real coup to have him, he's had his own TV show, his own radio show, several books, he's toured and spoken all over the world, he's a little bit edgy, outspoken, not shy, entertaining, you will not be bored, it'll be early in the morning, but you will be woken up. We're very lucky, it's a real coup, if you've ever come to the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, this would be the one. You want to come up, call the mayor's office, we're selling, I can tell you, tables at a record pace this year, much faster than ever in the past, and last year, we had a full house. So the event again is Wednesday, September 26th, Michael Korn will be our guest speaker. Trillium Awards will take place at the Ramada on Lundys Lane, Wednesday, October 3rd, that was already mentioned about the Parkinson's event for Greg Fruin. The United Way Elimination Dinner and Draw will be Club Italia Thursday, October 11th. Niagara Concerts Bicentennial Event at the Scotia Center on October 13th, and we've already talking about the mini-golf tournament taking place on Tuesday, October 16th. It's been quite a while since our last meeting, so we had extra announcements, and I appreciate your patience as we ran through these. Counselor Maves?
Yes, your worship, I had the pleasure, should have been in the announcements, I guess, of representing yourself and council at the new Dollar Tree store on Saturday morning. I was in Camiso's Plaza, they have an excellent staff there, and they have a wonderful dollar store there. The only downside was it was 8:00 in the morning, and as you know, it was pouring down rain, so the only two people there were his staff, Kim Crater, and myself. But anyway, it was quite interesting, but they do have a wonderful outlet there, and I wish them all a success.
Thank you for representing us there, Counselor Maves, and to all the council who are available to represent the city at the different various events, we do appreciate it. Counselor Morocco?
Your worship, just one that you forgot, I represented the mayor and council at the Niagara Falls Yoga Center on Lundys Lane, with Kim Crater, and they said thank you very much for attending.
And the yoga, yes, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention, new yoga studio on Lundys Lane. Did I miss any other ones? No? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the communications and comments of the city clerk. First item, Culture Days, recommendation that September 28th to 30th be proclaimed Culture Days in the city of Niagara Falls, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Niagara Nights of Art, requesting relief from the noise bylaw for activities at the Farmer's Market at Sylvia Place on September 29th. Is there a recommendation? Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Wing. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Downtown BIA, there's parts 3A and 3B. 3A, there's a Downtown BIA requesting council approval for a replacement member on their board. Moved by Counselor Ianoni, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Is there any discussion to the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's passed. We do have members, I'd like to acknowledge members of the Downtown, or the Lundys Lane BIA here as well. Item 3B, Lundys Lane BIA requesting council approval for replacement members on their board. Counselor Wing, did you want to address this?
Sure, I might as well. The clerk and I were smiling at each other, we had a long discussion this afternoon about all this, and I know he's not averse to the compromise I proposed, you know, definitely there's two sides to this, but the one thing I want to point out is, I don't think the lane has ever looked so good. We have the new decorative street signs, there's the War of 1812 banners, which are your usual can eat, score, shop, enjoy sort of stuff, but are actually meaningful and very appropriate, given that that was a troop quarter during the War of 1812. And also, later this year, it's been approved in the budget, the black light poles between Drumming and Highland are going to be continued all the way down the length of the lane, so the whole streetscaping that started to take shape a few years ago, when the red-and-black themed benches and garbage receptacles first went in, is really starting to come out now, and I think it's looking absolutely great. But, that being said, yes, there are currently problems, and... But that being said, yes, there are currently problems, and I vindicated to the clerk, I actually wrote him a few weeks ago and said I wanted to resign, and I don't know if you remember the beginning of the term, but I didn't want to take this appointment again. Nobody else would step forward. So in answer to the call for all seven people who have been delinquent to step down, I will step down, and I guess I should give the rest of the council a chance to discuss this. But I would also like to propose that the resignations of those who have been delinquent be accepted, but that nobody else be appointed in the interim, that the board continue on with those who are left, because I think you have a good core group that can work well together and continue to get things done. 14 is a little large and unwieldy for a board anyhow, so I would just like to see things settle down. There's some big fish left to fry, and I'd like to see them get back to work.
Okay, so did you want to, so are there two parts to your motion, Counselor?
Oh, yeah. I said it, you're saying.
Okay, but we might not accept that, but okay. So, but no, but besides that, in regard to the appointments.
Yes, I believe what we should do is accept the resignations of those who have been delinquent, chronically absent, however you want to term it, but not appoint anybody new. I would make one exception to that. Lisa, and I'm hoping I pronounce her name correctly, Toka, T, I think it's T-O-K-E-C, something like that. She was appointed at the May General Meeting. For some reason, that appointment never came to council to be approved, but she began attending board meetings immediately after that. She's with one of the larger operations of the lane.
Addition to the line?
No, no, no. Lisa, and I, her name is in here someplace, and I'm not even sure of the pronunciation, but.
Ramada.
Yes, the Ramada. She was an excellent addition to the board for the meetings that she was at, so I would like to see her ratified. She isn't part of the present upset. She was appointed before that.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Wing. Is there, do we have a seconder? So the motion is that, if I understand correctly, five members have resigned, and there's one person who was on the board since May, but we never officially appointed them at council, is that right? So that's the motion that we have on the floor right now. Do we have a seconder for that motion? No seconder for the motion? Okay, Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I've been reading all of the emails, half an hour at a time, each one, and I tell you, I really am confused about the whole situation out there, and I think there's a real opportunity for maybe referring this to our clerk and to get him involved in what she does so well in meaningful dialogue with the people out there. I have certainly friends and acquaintances on both sides of the coin here, and I think it just takes a little bit of massaging and working with them. I don't know why Counselor Wing is resigning. I heard nothing but complimentary comments about her efforts in trying to keep the group on the right track, but I think it really deserves a little pause at this point, so we can try to get everybody working in a common cause for the betterment of Lundys Lane and tourism. So I'd like to see it referred, rather than try to make a decision where people are upset the next day, or they're not satisfied with that. That's just my feeling at this point, because I don't know the answers. I haven't been involved, and I don't know all the details. There seems to be a lot of things that have happened that are not according to the bylaws and constitution. And if that's the case, it should be discussed and rectified.
Counsel Ianone?
I have to agree with everything that's coming in, and we're trying to read them on the fly, and the ones that are in our package tonight. I'm not sure who's doing, who's on what. But I will say this, when the Downtown BIA had a problem, and we looked at 15, and we put three members of council on it, one of us always ends up at a meeting. Like, Joyce, we were just talking, sometimes it's hard, you can miss three meetings in a row, because we have so many commitments along with our families. But with the three of us sitting there, one of us always ends up at the Downtown BIA meeting. Maybe we need more than one counselor. I don't know what their bylaws say, but, I mean, she's on a lot of committees. I would say we, first motion, I would refuse her resignation. So I would move if we refuse her resignation. You want to?
Yeah.
Okay. So now we have nobody who will sit there, no council members.
Well, Counselor Gates is away, so.
So.
You know, that works.
But we're saying that in jest, but maybe the problems have to be fixed before anybody wants to go on and take on something like that again.
Counselor Kerrio, then Peter Angelo?
If Counselor Thompson's making a motion to refer to Dean, I'd like to hear from Dean, because I've read all of the correspondence, and I've gotten many calls. There's obviously some dissension on Lundys Lane, there's some problems. And it has to be fair, you have to have fair representation. And I don't know how you have representation, leave two or the three biggest assessed people out of the mix. I don't know how you do that. In the Falls View BIA and in the Victoria Centre BIA, they've put something in where automatically the top, within the top six or seven contributors to BIA get automatic seats on the board. So, and not to load the board, so they would never have a majority, but at least they get representation. It just doesn't seem fair that someone could contribute 20% of the budget and not be able to get a seat, because the voting gets, you know, stacked up or whatever, however they do it, and don't get a seat on the board. So I think we need to have a good look at this. It has to be fair representation. Everyone has to be treated fairly, and it can't just be, in this case, representation by population. There has to be some representation by contribution to make it fair. Otherwise, you could see the, you know, you could see some of the big players pull out, and then you won't see all the things happen if you don't have the contribution that Counselor Wing has described, because it's the contributions of the big players and a lot of the players that have made it feasible to spend the money there. So there's got to be some better resolution than to see this dissension among the ranks. It's too bad, but I think if we can look at it, and I think Counselor Ianone has a good point, maybe there has to be more than one counselor until this thing gets settled, and there seems to be harmony on Lundys Lane.
Okay, well, maybe we'll get feedback from our clerk then on your suggestion, Mr. Clerk?
Right now?
Well, did you want to use, say before?
Well, I'm thinking. His motion to refer to Dean, to come back and have a look at it, because I read it, and I'm not sure about whether or not the bylaws were contravening the Lundys Lane bylaws. I read comments, and I hear comments from others that said they were within their rights to do what they did, then, so I don't know. I would really like Dean to analyze what he sees and come back and report to us.
Oftentimes, our clerk is our eyes and our advisor on BIA issues.
I was calling for input on the BIA.
BIA-ologist. You go submit it.
I don't know if that's really in my job description.
Ken, can you add it in, please? It is now, yeah.
Yeah, you referred to staff. I'll come back with a report and give you my opinion and my recommendation.
It's what happens when you're in control.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Worship, I don't mind the recommendation that's on the floor. I think we need some type of guidance, because I think at this point we have two sides. One side is saying one thing, the other side is saying another thing, so it'd be nice to have someone who's entirely impartial give us their opinion. I also wanted to ask, Your Worship, if there was anyone here in the audience, because I noticed that there's a number of members that wish to address council at all on this. And then the third question that I had was, when are their meetings?
Pardon me?
When are their meetings?
When are their meetings? Counselor Wing?
When I started, it was Tuesday mornings at 10:00 a.m., and then it became, I believe it was Wednesday afternoons, I think it was 3:00 o'clock. So there was an attempt to accommodate everybody's schedules, but it wasn't always successful, so they sort of moved it under that.
A little bit of a moving target. Counsel, Mr. Clerk?
Well, I mean, you're going to refer to staff. I suggest you refer it to staff. You know, there's been some fairly salacious comments in various emails, and I don't think it's appropriate to air them at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been seconded that we refer this to staff. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, and thank you to the BIA members for coming out tonight. I'm sure we'll get a fair and impartial evaluation from the clerk. Yes, Counsel Ianone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This again is coming from, direction from the clerk. There was a motion at the last council meeting. I had left and gone home, and it was a motion to propose the change from residential loan to residential grant for the Downtown Community Improvement Plan. I'd like to put on the floor, as we're discussing Downtown BIs, I'd like to put on the floor a motion to reconsider that. Had I been here, the vote would have went differently, so I'd like to put a motion to reconsider.
Through the chair to, yes, really, our procedural bylaw is fairly liberal as far as reconsideration motions, especially reconsideration motions that happen at a following meeting. Basically, any counselor can make a motion for reconsideration, it has to be seconded. That doesn't mean that the decision is reversed, council's past decision. What it just means is that either you may want to debate it again tonight, or you may want to put, debate it at a future meeting. You know, that obviously is up to council. Really, the reconsideration allows you to discuss the matter again and then go from there. I mean, we did anticipate this might happen. We put the report from July 24th in your council package this evening, but I appreciate that you probably, you know, may not be prepared to actually debate the specifics of the issue.
Counsel Ianone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through the clerk, through yourself, to Counsel Peter Angelo, I asked that before we came in. I wanted to make sure I could stand up here and put the motion to reconsider on the floor. I watched the debate that night from home. I wish I could have texted in my vote, that doesn't work, but it doesn't bother me if we put it off to the next meeting, or we have the debate right now.
Okay, well, yes, Counselor Thompson?
I'll second the motion, providing we don't debate it now.
Want to debate it next time?
It's already been debated.
Unless you want to just hope.
Mr. Mayor? The only voice that didn't debate it that night was mine. And quite frankly, I don't have, the only thing that I had a problem with was it being open-ended. I didn't have a problem with the six-month window. I don't, and I think if we are reassessing it at six months, takes away the ability for abuse, and I think tag teamed on to initiatives we're looking for in the downtown, it's probably not a bad idea.
So we've got a motion by Counsel Ianone, seconded by Counselor Thompson?
To support the past.
To reconsider, okay. Counselor Wing?
Yeah, just to be clear, there's actually two motions on it. The first one was that council approve the recommendation related to the conversion from a loan to a grant program, and that was defeated. And then there was a motion that the report be referred to staff to work with the Downtown BIA on a revised loan program, and that one carried. So which are we reconsidering?
The first one.
The first one, okay. So what about the second one then?
It would occur to me if the first one passes, the second one is not needed.
Do we need to reconsider vote?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, it depends on the first one.
I have no problem with deferring this to the next meeting. Perhaps the Downtown BIA would also like to be here. So I would move it to the next meeting and have that debate happen again.
Okay. So.
She deferred on modifying your motion?
Or are you withdrawing your motion?
No, I'm not drawing the motion to reconsider, but having the debate, I would, the motion reconsider is on the floor, and the discussion would be at the next meeting. I know nobody was prepared to come here tonight and have that discussion, and the BIA is not here.
Yeah, I mean, you can do either. I mean, the first thing you have to do, though, is reconsideration. If that's defeated, then the point is moot. So then if it's passed, then you get into, are we going to debate it tonight, or are we going to vote on it? There's basically two choices there. Yep.
Counsel Ianone?
Correct. I would think we would have, we would need an entire council here to have that debate. Maybe Counselor Gates might have something to say on that also, so I would defer it to the next meeting.
Then just withdraw.
Yeah, so just withdraw, right?
Well, I thought you had to bring it back. The motion to reconsider had to be on the floor.
Can you call the motion to council?
I did, I made it, I can't call it.
Yeah, hold on, can you, Mr. Clerk, Counsel, do you understand what we're doing right now?
Yeah, a motion to reconsider basically puts it back on the floor for debate. Now, in fairness, you're suggesting that we would, if the reconsideration motion passes, that you would defer the debate to the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Is that clear?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we called, any discussion to the motion? All those in favor for reconsider? Opposed? It's defeated.
Let's move on.
So in essence, what's going to happen is next meeting, you're going to have another reconsideration motion for the other reconsideration motion.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, there's nothing in your procedural bylaw that prevents that from happening.
And I do it if I'm just in BIA.
Item four, Canadian Artists Niagara Requesting Assistance in Finding New Accommodations. There's a recommendation to refer this to staff. Looking for a motion to, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? Okay. Item five, Niagara Bird Kingdom Requesting an Amended Lease Agreement Regarding Their Billboard. There's a recommendation.
Move by favor to refer to staff and negotiate that issue.
Moved by Counselor Thompson to refer to staff, seconded by Counselor Wing. All those in favor? Okay. Houck Park, Petition from Nearby Residents for Lighting in the Parking Lot to Discourage Loiterers in the Parking Lot. There's a recommendation to refer to staff for a report. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Ianone. All those in favor? Okay. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
Yes, Your Worship, two communications. One from our neighbors next door at Hatch, asking for council's consideration to partner on a memorial garden that would go in our future park across the way that's slated to open at the end of the month. They want to do a little peace garden. They would contribute, I think it's $500 a year to go towards some perennials in the park. Staff do not feel there would be too much additional cost from a staff perspective, so it's for council's consideration. And the second one's from the Legion, they're requesting their sort of annual request for Legion Week and a flag raising on September 17th.
Okay, Counsel Ianone?
I would move the Hatch, I would move the vote, but I would like to commend Hatch. What a great idea that is.
Okay, moved by Counsel Ianone, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? And I would also like to add, you know, one day I was driving downtown, down Erie, and I noticed a bunch of people in reflective vests walking all through the downtown, down the trail, down on Queen Street, down on Bridge Street. So I pulled over, and I asked them who they were. They said, "We're from Hatch." And I said, "What are you doing?" "We're picking up the garbage." And they routinely do maintenance along, all through the downtown, down the trail. It was unbelievable to see that kind of corporate partnership, and all the staff really getting into it. So I took a picture of them, I tweeted it out, and I thought, wow, very nice to have partners, corporate partners like that that take ownership. And now here they are again, stepping up to help fund the peace garden. Excellent. We are now looking for ratification of downstairs. I would ask Counselor Ianone to ratify the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Committee of the Whole. One, Committee of the Whole Minutes of July 24th, 2012 be approved. And under reports, MW 2012 34, Proposed Recreational Trail Edgewood Estate Subdivision, that staff be directed to proceed with the design and construction of the proposed recreational trail along the original planned alignment within the Edgewood Estates' plan of subdivision. And further, that staff work closely with the neighboring property owners to address any concerns related to public safety, security, privacy, and regular maintenance, and that the proposed trails precede residential development. And under new business, that staff report back on the possibility of a communications piece/newsletter. I still move.
Moved by Counsel Ianone, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. And then we ask Mr. Clerk to read and ratify the in-camera recommendation.
A couple of items, Your Worship, one related to parts of road allowance between township lots 120 and 136, and in fact, there's a couple of bylaws later on in the agenda related to this, so the recommendation is that council approve that the road be permanently ceded. So the recommendation is that council approve that the road be permanently closed and declared surplus and offered for sale to Walker Industries. Similarly, similar recommendation related to part of road allowance between township lots 119 and 120.
Yes, Mr. Bearden?
There's only one being closed, the one between 120 and 136. The other one is not being closed. So if you have to, if the road was doing one, bottom, are your surplus closed, stop that, that's the road between 120 and 136.
My apologies.
Okay.
The other matters is part of, part of the agreement, but it's not going to stop the vote.
Okay, thank you. We have a mover to approve that move by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Iannone. All those in favor? And then, opposed, Counselor Peter Angelo. Moving on to the consent agenda, that's the will of council. Okay, moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we move the consent agenda. Anyone want to pull? Yes, Counselor Morocco.
Just wanted to make sure that I already declared a conflict with PD 2012-49, not the ones.
Okay, got that one. Counsel, yes, Counselor Wing?
The one I would like to discuss separately would be MW 2012-46, the 2012 new sidewalk and sidewalk replacement program.
Okay. Anything else lifted by the council? Okay, so we'll move the remainder of the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And then we'll discuss NW 2012-46, new sidewalk and sidewalk replacement program. Counselor Wing?
Thank you. First of all, with regards to the sidewalk replacement, the one thing that really jumped out at me when I read this report, and I wanted to highlight, is the statement at the top of page two, that the established service life for sidewalks is 40 years. Approximately 45% of the city's sidewalk has no service life left, and it's an infrastructure replacement cost of over 22 million. I know I'm always hammering about the importance of keeping up our basic infrastructure, roads, or sidewalks, and, you know, here's another report highlighting that. But the other thing is, I've had a complaint about the need for a sidewalk on the south side of Murray Street between Stanley and the Main, Ellen Dale intersection. So this is the top of Murray Hill. It sees an awful lot of pedestrian traffic, both employees going to, walking to work, and tourists wandering up. There's that one section of Main there beside where the Happy Wanderer used to be, has metered lots on both sides, so that's heavily used. We really need to get a sidewalk there along that block on the south side. Somebody I know commented that he almost wipes people out every time he goes down there. I mentioned this to Mr. Holman, brought it to his attention, and he asked me to raise it tonight, and we discussed the possibility of it being added to the new sidewalk program. So I guess I'll make a motion that it be added.
Okay. So, Mr. Holman, do you want to comment on that, or are you good with that? Okay. Got it moved by Counselor Wing. Do we have a seconder to have this done? Do we have a second after this motion? Counselor Thompson, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? All right, it's approved. Thank you, counsel. Okay, moving on to.
Did you put the sidewalk as well? Did it do that, or just?
Oh, yeah, and the remainder, I guess. That's like the remainder of the report. Moved by, thank you, Counselor Cario. Moved by Counselor Cario, seconded by Counselor Maves, that we move the remainder of the report. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, we have a notice of motion from Counselor Wing for our consideration. Counselor Wing?
Yes, and I note that there's also a letter from Marineland asking that it be deferred. I'd just like to speak to that and say the OSPCA and CASA investigations have nothing to do with the issues that I raised in my resolution, no matter what either of those investigations determine. It doesn't negate the fact that these types of facilities, zoos, aquariums, menageries, are unregulated in this province, and that marine mammal imports into Canada are unregulated as well. And those are the issues I'm speaking to. I don't think there's really anything for any local facilities to worry about if they're looking after the animals in their care, and, you know, really, if, as Kim explained to me when I met with him in the wintertime about the issue of employers demanding sick notes from their employees, which the employees have to pay for, because you can't just go to the doctor and get a sick note, you actually have to pay for it. So a lot of times, we're talking about employees making minimum wage, who are sick, have lost time at work already, and now have to fork out extra money to get a sick note or report into work. And some of the, the one that really spurred me to get active was the fact that the people in question were food handlers, reporting into work sick because they couldn't afford to miss any more time, nor they, could they afford a doctor's note. So they were reporting to work sick. So I ended up having a meeting with Kim last winter over this issue, and he explained the whole process of making changes to legislation, all the public meetings that take place, and all of the opportunities for public input. So I'm pretty aware, at least, how that works at the provincial level. I imagine it works similarly at the federal level. So if the province or the federal government decide to act on our resolutions, there will be ample opportunity for everybody interested to make public comment and presentations as well. So with no further ado, I'll simply put my motions on the floor. I guess the first, the first one was about being resolved, that we call upon the province to enact the changes that will require all zoos, menageries, and aquariums to acquire a license to operate, establish mandatory standards of animal management and care, including provisions to address the physical, including dietary, environmental, emotional, and social needs of captive animals according to current academic knowledge and understanding of each, each species' needs, and human health and safety, and that will require license holders to satisfy license conditions, regulations, and standards.
Okay, moved by Counselor Wing, and seconded by Counselor Iannone. Counselor Thompson?
Well, first of all, we've had a request for deferral. I think we're in the midst of waiting for a lot of information here. I don't know whether the details of this have any impact on that whatsoever. I haven't researched this. I haven't discussed this with anybody to feel comfortable that this is the way we, maybe it is. I don't know at this point. But out of fairness, I would move a referral of this with the time factor to get the reports back, and the opportunity to staff to give us some input on this documentation, and also to give the opportunity for any other input.
So, did you, is that a motion? Are you making a motion?
Second motion for deferral.
Okay, we have a motion for deferral. It's non-debatable.
Identify the general executive director of.
We can't talk about this, though. This is a motion for deferral. It's non-debatable. Okay, so we'll call, there's a motion for deferral, for this to come back with staff input. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Okay, two opposed. Okay. Pardon me? Did she vote, yeah. She voted for and against. Opposed.
I opposed.
Okay. And so, is there any other business on this, or are we on to the bylaws? Okay, Counselor Wing? And that one is where?
It's actually in the handouts. It's the one, whereas the government of Canada has jurisdiction over matters involving fisheries and oceans, it's that one where we call upon the government of Canada to pass legislation that will properly control and regulate the importation of cetaceans through permitting, operating standards, and advanced public notification and comment process, proper oversight and enforcement, and/or that will prohibit the import and export of cetaceans. And I will note that I ran both this one and the previous one, passed the executive director of the Niagara Falls Humane Society, and he supported both.
Counselor Thompson?
Same reaction. I'd like to have a report back from staff. I haven't talked to the Humane Society. I haven't any information, so if we're going to do this, let's do it properly, and leave the proper information, and I would move to defer all.
Okay, motion for deferral, seconded. It's not debatable. Call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, two opposed. Okay, we've got land bylaws, and I'm requesting whether there's anyone present that has an interest respecting the following bylaws. Firstly, 2012-75, a bylaw to permanently close part of a highway. Is anybody here of interest to this bylaw? Okay, or the second, 2012-76, a bylaw to declare the road allowance between township lots 120 and 136 Stamford in the city of Niagara Falls surplus. Nobody here for that? Okay. And Mr. Clerk, are there any other additional bylaws? Yes?
Sorry, Your Worship, thank you. In your handouts, there's a bylaw related to enforcement officers. It's a standard bylaw. There's been a few changes, so we're just reflecting those changes. So that bylaw would be 2012-90, and then the last two bylaws would be consecutively numbered.
Okay, thank you. Looking for.
Land bylaws first.
All at once?
Include them all at once, yeah.
I wish to comment on the motion, but I want to go opposed to 2012-76.
2012-76, right, okay. Okay? Okay, to 75 and 76. Okay. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo to introduce the bylaws for first reading, and seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Wing, yes?
Yes, I just wanted to go on record as opposed to the ones formerly noted as 79, 80, and 81.
Got that? Okay. Are we good? Okay, thank you. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah.
Okay. What, we did call the vote? We did the vote. All those in favor again?
Bylaws 2012-77 to 2012-92, read at a first time?
Okay, second and third reading, Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2012-77 to 2012-92, read a second and third time, it passed.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. New business. Counselor Wing, Counselor Morocco?
Just very quickly.
Thank you, fellows.
I was reading recently that the Niagara Falls Chamber of Commerce had considered joining the regional chamber, but opted not to because they recognized that the intent of a chamber of commerce is to be a grassroots, local organization, and that chambers function best as such. So I just thought that we should pass a resolution of support for the Niagara Falls Chamber's decision and its continuance as such as the Niagara Falls Chamber of Commerce, so I will propose that motion.
Okay. We have a motion to recognize our Chamber of Commerce and its role organically in grassroots. Moved by Counselor Wing, and seconded by Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I've been very proud to see that they've rejected a lot of the one-chamber-in-the-region issue, and I think they've made the right decision, and I think we should support it by seconding the motion.
Any other discussion around the motion? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, counselor. Counselor Morocco?
Yeah, I have a couple of ones. I'll make them really brief. The first one is, I'd like to have the support of council, have a motion to put forth a proposal to, put an application to, for the conference, for the Ontario Small Urban Municipalities Conference that's looking for a venue for 2015. It happens to be the same year that we're getting AMO, but it's in May, so it's a good time of the year. It's about 200 people. I met with Jim Collier, Jim Collier, from Niagara on the Lake, and I know that he spoke with you also. So there is a financial commitment, but apparently we can meet with Ted Bowles, who I'm sure you're familiar with, who actually oversees the trade show component of it, and there's money to be made from that. So we won't be out of pocket, and I ask that maybe we set up a meeting with Ted Bowles just to make sure, but I would like the support of council, because they are having an October meeting to put forth other destinations to hold their conference.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Morocco, seconded by Counselor Iannone, that we go after this conference to bring it to Niagara Falls in 2015. Is there any discussion around? Yes, Counselor? Okay, we got a second, all right? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, thank you, counselor.
And the next one is, I'm sure that we've heard a lot on the news lately in regards to Toronto and Rob Port, and in regards also to London, Joel Fontana, the mayor there, in regards to integrity commissioner. And I would like to put forward a motion that we investigate hiring or the retaining of an integrity commissioner for the city of Niagara Falls. So either we do it on a retainer basis or a cost sharing. And as we heard at AMO, there's a number of municipalities that are now looking at that. So it's basically, we're coming forward and saying, you know what, we're going to hold ourselves accountable for any wrongdoings that some may see. I know that it doesn't affect the municipal act. I know Dean just can't wait to jump up and talk about it, but I think it's basically to make sure that we are binding by our code of ethics, and I do appreciate the fact that we do have ours already settled. Maybe it needs to be looked at. So if I can get staff, and maybe the mayor would like to speak at that as well, because I know you did speak to the mayors in London.
Yeah, at AMO, I did as well speak to Mayor Fontana, and also at the FCM. And there seems to be a more, a bigger move toward having an integrity commissioner that they can rely on. Now, we're not a big city where we would need to have use for one, but the idea out there is municipalities are looking at either having one of a retainer or shared use around the region. I've spoken with some other mayors in the Niagara region, and they like the idea of having someone that they can bounce things off of when they're not sure about if we're going down the right route or not, before we get ourselves too much into any kind of trouble. So it's a, it's a request to ask staff to report back on an integrity commissioner, and the options of having one, and I definitely would support that direction as well. Motion by Counselor Morocco, and seconded by Counselor Cario. Counselor Cario, do you want to speak to it?
No. Just to get a report back?
It's to get a report back from staff on that. Is there any other discussion, questions, or comments around that? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, counselor. No, and Counselor Peter Angelo, you've got a motion as well? You were mentioning earlier?
Yeah, no, just kidding. Your Worship, I was going to say that you forgot to mention the improvements to the council chambers. I think that you did a good job.
Oh, no, I mentioned. But do I talk about them again? Ken's so proud of himself. Come on, he painted them himself.
Okay, Your Worship, under new business, after the 2000 election, council passed the strategic priorities. And speaking with the CIO, I know he just said to me that it would help the business development department if they could acquire the appropriate consultants, Your Worship, to assist, I guess, in taking a proactive approach to seeing that we achieve our priorities. So to that effect, Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion, and that report be brought back to council later.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Iannone. Is there any discussion to the motion? Then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Is there any other new business? Counselor Morocco?
Sorry, one more. Since FJ Butler School is closing, they would like to know if it's possible that one of the new streets, one of the streets in the new subdivision be named J. Hartley.
So we can refer that to appropriate staff. Moved by Counselor Morocco, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? Okay, motion for German, Counselor Cario, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? All right, thank you.